Call this getting ordered.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first on our agenda is the two of our June meetings minutes. Any questions or discussion?
No.
Right, Ellen Baker?
Hi.
Right, motion carries. All right, Department reports and projects, the water department.
There's been nothing new on here. In fact, some of these old things that we haven't reviewed, but it seems like they've been out for a long time. There are really things he needs to do and not us. They did have a power outage. Or actually sewer plant, I'm sorry. But anyway, they had a power outage at the sewer plant. Week before last. And it was a mixed up thing. And it came out pretty quickly. Other than that, there's nothing new on here, so. Just some questions. I think I had mentioned it the last one. No, I was just asking. They are getting two subterranean rebuilds to the location. And I do not have a price on it. They had one pump go out. We want to put the other one back in on the distance in leaking oil. So they now have two of them fixed. So we're currently working on one pump. It's not a big deal. As long as it doesn't fail. But soon as the other ones in, they'll stop.
Do we need to try to get, I don't have any team replaced?
Um, when we get the question higher, we can do that.
Okay.
It's not something.
Okay. Police department?
I can, is that bringing? On the street department side, I just had a very good chicker this afternoon. Water is not functioning and Kenny said the fire got knocked out, took a few breaks. I've got a quote for a dump truck. They can't find a license fee. Still looking for pickup.
Okay.
I'll keep you updated. Uh, one other thing is, we're going to be setting up a salt spread. And then there was a salt spread. He's not more. Kind of like a rainy nonsense inside. So I'll have to see if I can.
Okay. Is it a gasoline engine?
Yeah, it's just like a 10 horsepower engine.
Okay.
I can find him, it's got some paint to go left as far as wind throttle box and stuff. And all kinds of things.
And then my next thing would like the lead back.
Hopefully that works.
So the, is it the dump truck you found?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, is it the one?
Yeah. Was this one, that's it?
Okay.
That's it. And that's how they have reworked in Chicago. Hoping to get out of something in the street. I'm always in. Volunteer. Chris to take.
Okay. All right, um, anything else in the street department?
No, I don't think so. Oh, one other thing is, uh, kind of. Free water department, street department. And did you call out to, uh, I've had another chat yet. You get a quote on doing the county work. I guess it's that number.
So. Earlier, last week, the air commission was not working in the town hall, nor was the generator. So I called our HVAC guy. He came in, walked into the furnace room and flipped the switch on, the furnace, which then allowed the air conditioner to work. And somebody must have flipped the switch on the generator. That tripped the automatic switch on the inside. So we might want to get new things to put on there that people can't do that. More so like the one on the light. Like a box or something to flip out with the switch.
Where is this switch?
The switch for the furnace, it's right on the side of the thing. Somebody might have thought they were shutting the light off.
Okay, that is not the last one.
Yeah, and then maybe, I don't know what it's like on the outside of the generator. But if it's set automatically to run on the inside, if somebody turns that switch on and off on the outside, it trips that one off.
Oh. So if somebody switches off this light switch on the inside, that trips the one on the generator outside? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, no. So like, you know, the generator is set to automatically run. That's, that's done like inside when you open the thing up to program it. I guess there's a switch outside that if somebody was turned it on, turned it off, that will trip the one on the inside. Kind of like an emergency, so if there's like a fire or something, somebody can go ahead and do that. So no gas will continue to.
And also, is that something that just a kid could come up with?
Yeah. But, um, what I also learned was. His original thing that he's done is concrete work. So. He said, yeah, he, he just does, oh, he's just an electrician on the side. It's like a side company. I don't know, but anyway, he is interested in giving us a quote for, um, I mean, it's just what, two packs or something?
No, it's a little bit more.
Yeah, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we want to? Do you want to get multiple quotes for that? Does anybody else who want to pick around?
The only other one that I'm, I'm aware of is that could be even competitive, big gems concrete. I contacted.
Oh, you already, okay, you contacted them?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Um, and then I also got a note under utility from the work session. Were you able to name Zest again about getting a water heater installed?
Yes, in effect, they, they haven't told me when they're going to do it, but they asked a couple of them.
Okay, great. And then Jenny, do you have any progress on finding a plumber for those two insect meters in the fire department?
No.
Okay.
I have a line on two or three of them that I got from Zest.
Okay. Should we move that to you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, okay. All right. I haven't yet hooked my head in crawl space in the fire department office, but I'll do that all the way down home from this. So that was the other.
What's on there?
To do me head, I don't know, that's why I put my head there. Oh, so, um, we were just wondering if there was some access that would ease your trouble a bit. Worth checking it out.
Is there a meeting for them?
What?
Is there a fire department meeting for them?
Yeah, I don't know, we'll just lock, yeah, while I do it.
Well, I just wondered that in case you'd stick your head in there.
Right, all right, okay, pull me out, yeah. Um, okay, great. So police department. We contacted the people about radars, they should be here by the fourth?
Seventh.
Seventh, I hope.
Ship date on the seventh, she said that they should have advised us about this when we were going. But usually they run a week or two early, so hopefully in the next couple of days. It'll be here.
Also, I know there was an issue with a motorcycle running down the road doing wheelies. I took care of that last month. Uh, it was a kid from Shelby, and he was told not to come back over here.
He was right up the hill.
He was the one right up the hill.
Over the parking lot, I don't know where he ended up on your side.
Oh, he came up from the street through the trees on my side and then went to the parking lot and went down that way.
Regardless, it was a child.
Did you come through your yard? Yeah, that's why I got the yellow roadblock.
There's a report on that, but it was damaged. Just the information. Okay.
Who has to install your radars? Does anybody have to install them or just plug in?
This one should be a plug and play.
Actually, it's a plug and play, it's hand cordless, so I'll have a, I'll do it just up there.
Okay, perfect. Nice.
Fire department report? They had seven calls last month. One of them was a fire utility call, the rest were in a mess. Any questions? Oh, the porta potters. Can we go ahead and do that?
It's been done.
Okay, great.
Mm-hmm.
All right, press, pressure reports.
Oh, can I say something real quick?
Sure.
Uh, fire department, their hot roast is this Saturday at five o'clock. So they have a lot of raffles. Um, there's going to be a lot of food. Uh, the Van Vliet brothers are playing again. Probably at dark like they did, oh, last year. Um, they're going to come up here the day before, borrow some tables and chairs. They'll document how many they take, so make sure that everything gets brought back, but, um, help spread the word. Uh, it's going to be a good time.
I also, then Marmee asked me if they could come up Friday and use the kitchen. Did she mention it to you?
Yeah, yeah, I said, that's fine, you know, she knows how to clean up after herself. I think it's just to help prepare.
Do I need to light anything? Can they handle that or not?
I don't, I don't, I don't know if, if the oven's going to be needed, I.
Well, if they just let me know and I can come up with it.
Yeah, I think it's just so there's just more room.
Okay.
And so they can kind of make a night out of them helping each other too.
Okay, just let me know.
Is this still, we have to?
Yeah, I have to, I have to turn on the side and I have to light all everything you have on the ground.
Something I went to the other night in Shelby, they had a pork chop dinner to help.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know how they promote that. There was a lot of people.
Yeah, it's an annual thing, they do it the same date every year. Um, sometimes it's a fundraiser for themselves, but lately it, it, the past couple of years, it has not, it's been to benefit somebody who needs help. And they. They raised, I mean, just on raffles alone, I want to say they raised about 10 grand. Um, and they sold thousands of pork chops.
Only reason I bring it up is maybe if you contact them and find out how they promote it.
They just, it's Facebook and word of mouth and reputation. It's, it's every year, it's the same day.
Really impressive, huh?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, there is a line, a lot more.
Yeah, yeah. That's, it's a nice turnout.
Yeah.
Um, I believe Heidi, uh, from West Creek Township. Um, and she's asked her board to come, they're going to come to the fundraiser. Um, that they've got a meeting with, or they have a plan to meet with our fire department about earning their business in the future. So I had a conversation with her after the last ambulance board meeting, like it's, you know, she wants to meet with them, wants to hear what they have to offer, wants to consider it. It's not up to her, it's up to her board ultimately. But, um, you know, we've got, we've got a real shot at earning their business. So yeah, it'd be good if we can all be there at the fundraiser, I'll be there, thanks for mentioning it.
Mm-hmm.
So building commissioner, um, oh no, quick pressure report.
Uh, they've been looking to accept that at the river's.
Have any questions or discussions? All right, Ellen Baker? Any votes? Motion carries. So building department. Uh, building manager? Anything?
Well, they replaced, I guess the cleaning guy replaced the inside of the one with the mints off the list. I don't know if he overrunning one.
He didn't know how to turn it on. So he said he was going to come talk to you about it, but.
Turn on.
He said he didn't know if the water was off or if it was on, he didn't know how to turn it back on.
Is it in the mints?
Yeah, I guess. There was supposedly, there was two toilet turners?
I only knew about the one.
Okay, well, I don't know if there's something with the mints, is there even water in it? Has anybody checked it?
I couldn't hear anything from there, I, you know, used to hear me wrong, but I don't hear anything, so.
All right, the building commissioner, we've got the report, no permits, no contractor's licenses in August. Uh, we've got the meeting with the DNR this Friday at noon here at the community building. I've got a couple of to do's to follow up to get things. Jenny, you've got those permits again, thanks for doing that. Do we have the new construction permit? We didn't talk about this in the work session, we haven't made a point this meeting.
Right.
I know we have the, like, general, the full permit and the.
I can work on it, I think what was holding me back was, because waiting to see if you were going to okay the miscellaneous one.
Oh.
Because I read the conversation between you and Brandon and it kind of seemed like, he was like, it's kind of fine, it's up to the building commissioner to really make sure the regulations are put in place.
Right.
Um, the verbiage is in there, so I kind of, you know, sparked something to the applicant that there's going to be these requirements. So I didn't know if there was something more you wanted me to add, I didn't want to start something new and have to redesign it. But if you're okay with how it is, then I'll start the next one.
Yeah, go ahead and start the next one.
Okay. Will do. I should, I should have no problem having that ready by Friday.
Okay. Um, we're going to try to meet with Tim, Kevin and I on Thursday. Um, we're, uh, he just texted about like an hour ago.
Yeah, I saw, yeah.
I mean, what's your available?
Uh, I should be able to get it anytime.
Okay.
It's going to happen, so.
Yeah, right. So we're going to need to publish a public meeting. Because it's Kevin and I in a forum and.
For when?
Thursday, I don't know the time yet.
Okay, I'll have to know by tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll get it, um, figured out a time tonight. You just want to be immediate? I think he was okay with Wednesday, he just didn't.
What are you guys, what are you guys discussing to where it can just be an executive session? Or is it going to be a public meeting where you guys got to videotape each other? What are you discussing, what are you talking about?
We have to videotape each other or.
Well, yeah, I mean, you could do that too.
We have to live stream.
Yeah, you're going to have to livestream it, unless.
We're doing our tic-tac challenge, right?
Well, you have 40 hours to prepare.
Yeah.
I guess, I'm good with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What are you talking about?
What?
I mean, I don't believe, but what are you talking about, it's me, it's just the mints and all that.
We're talking about permits.
Because if you're talking about specific department issues and how to better them, that can, is, can be considered an executive session. And then.
Excuse me. Oh, there was this many asking Tim if he could do it. You're out, sorry. Oh my goodness, um, I don't, I'll, I don't, let's talk about how there could be an executive session. I don't, I don't think it can. We ran into this with the ambulance board, the list of approved executive session things is actually very narrow.
Right.
We thought just personnel would be covered, but it's, it's very specific personnel things.
Mm-hmm.
So yeah, let's just look at the list together.
Okay.
So hopefully it'll be new and I'll, when Tim confirms it will do that. All right, anything else with the building commissioner? All right, um, all right, recital report. Still says one thousand. So board report, solid waste district.
Uh, we just, uh, we just had a meeting Thursday night. Um, it was actually a little different, this one was interesting.
Okay.
We had two speakers. One was a woman from, I can't remember the name of the company, but she's been contracting with the state to work with all the solid waste districts to come up with a. To kind of standardize everything statewide.
Okay.
But the more interesting one was a woman who was the, uh, she's a chemistry professor at Valparaiso University. And her specialty is plastics. What's going on with plastics, where's it all going? And once again, we got into the, you know, the stuff. How little of this actually gets recycled, I think I talked about that before. But her, probably the most interesting thing that she went over was how much of this stuff is absorbed in your body. They're starting to link microplastics. Because every time you drink some of this stuff, some of the plastic actually could, gets into the water. And your body takes it up. A lot of it goes through your organs, but your organs can pass it through. But one place that it doesn't get passed through is your brain. And they're starting to link it to dementia and Alzheimer's. They did, somebody, I don't know who it was. They did a, like a autopsy on an Alzheimer's person. Don't ask me how they do this. But they dissected her brain, this was a woman. And in the frontal lobe of her brain, they found seven grams of microplastics in her brain. That just amazes me.
That's a lot.
Well, it, it probably decided my, my little finger, and it was almost half full of like a powdered plastic. I just, I just slurred yesterday. Because your brain is the one part of your body that cannot pass it through. Once it's there, it's a curve. So it's kind of like, uh, if you remember DDT back in the insecticide era, what it did to organisms higher up in the food chain. It's kind of similar, a similar thing in humans, except that this is in your, in your own body. So, anyway, this is, it's very, it was very interesting. It doesn't prove anything, but that's one of the things that they're working to do is to get proof. And how much of this stuff is, how little of this stuff is actually recycled? It's just amazing. And even though they, they'll have meetings in Washington where they'll, uh, have like someone like this woman who would come to argue, should we be using this product? So they'll have her there or 10 people lighter with her, but then they'll have 50 people from the plastics industry to argue for it.
Mm-hmm.
So, anyway, it was very interesting, so. And like I said, it's, uh, once again, it's just amazing how little of this stuff and where this stuff was being found. Everywhere on the planet. And they're going to tell you that once before that, I believe it's the Marianas Trench in the ocean, the deepest part of the ocean, and they sent a robotic camera down there and they're going to plastic grocery. Anyway, that's my soapbox. But that's, uh, you know, the gist of what that making was about was those two, those two speakers.
Wow. Uh, Northwest Indiana Regional Planning Commission?
Uh, we had a meeting last Thursday morning. It was just an executive meeting. Um, so they discussed a few things, mostly about, um, electric vehicles. That's their big thing. There was, um, they talked about how, um, you can get grants in your community to get, um, the charging stations, because the more that they get in, then the more, the less distance the cars have to go. Somebody raised a question if like, if it was on like municipal ground, if they get a percentage of what the, is like these charging stations, there's, you know, it's still like, it's like a pay at the pump gas station, but it's just electricity instead of fuel. They also do a lot of things with, like, other non-gas type. There was a gentleman there that spoke about how he drives a bus and it's ran on propane. Like an old bus, I thought that was pretty interesting. But then they also had, um, after the meeting, there was a bunch of different vehicles that they had that were electric, if you wanted to drive them, they wouldn't let me drive the school bus. But they had, um, different even police cars, um, fire department vehicles, regular cars, just all different kinds of stuff, just to show people. So a bit interesting.
Uh, truck, ambulance, so we did have a board meeting last Tuesday on the 16th. We did pass the budget for next year. And we were able to give the employees raises to get to be competitive. Um, just paramedic salaries keep going up. And we had a whole lot of turnover. Um, I think we'd lost five people in the last six months because of wages, that's what people were telling us. And that, um, the, there's a big equipment purchase that, I think we did mention last time, the township trustees, that all three of them were able to do special appropriations. Last time they were planning to do special appropriations. So they were basically buying all the medical equipment we'll need for the next seven years. And we're trading in what we currently have. It was set up from the equipment provider as a lease. But because the prices go up every year, or like if you buy it now, and we were, we have a significant amount we were going to have to replace, a few hundred thousand dollars next year anyway. So if we buy it now, it actually costs you less because you don't pay the price increase. But it worked out just the time we needed to buy a lot, and then the trustees had money that if they didn't spend it, the state was going to take it with this old new property tax change. But the town of Bolts putting in $35,000, which is the first time that the town of Bolts contributed. But, uh, the town of Lowell is putting in thirty-five thousand dollars, which is the first time that the town of Lowell's contributed any money to it. So, yeah, it's, but I think we're, we've crossed an inflection point where the townships can't pay for the ambulance service on their own. Or at least maybe it seems like that. And that Lowell is starting to, to kick in. Cause about half of our cost of Lowell. And the, most of the property tax revenue for properties in Lowell goes to the town of Lowell. Some goes to the townships, but much less than the property outside of the town. So that's, yeah, it's kind of something going on there. Uh, Homeland Security?
Uh, there's been.
Alright, zoning? Do we have any zoning worries? Alright, any old business? No. Alright, new business, a public hearing for the twenty twenty-six budget. So what do we need to do?
So I gave you guys, um, everybody has a copy, uh, um, the first page is the budget form one. That is line item numbers. It is just to give you guys an example of what those are because reality in line items inside of, um, in, inside of like things in general, those, those numbers can always be switched inside each form. But it just shows you, um, basically how, how the money is getting split between those funds. That is split. Three pages of that. The next is the ordinance two twenty-five dash oh three. That is, that shows our tax rate and our levy split. Then the last page is the notice to taxpayers. That is what is advertised. It, it also shows everything that the ordinance spells out. Uh, so it does also signify that the adoption meeting will be October twenty-seventh. But this is the time, if anybody has any questions. Hopefully no changes, cause we probably won't have time to really shift rates around and re-advertise. So I hope the council is okay with everything. But if anybody has any questions on what, why, how, I'd love to try to answer them.
At, at least the same figure you showed us in the, in the board section.
Maybe. Very possibly, I I can't remember. I think, I think so. I think, cause then when I gave, I gave you some stuff and then I was like, hopefully you don't want me to change it, cause I have to advertise by a certain date. I didn't hear anything. So then I advertised. I didn't even hear from my DLGF rep, if everything looked perfect. But a few days, she's, she's just swamped, but she did get to me and she said that it, it looked okay, made sense. She can't really, you know, say if she's gonna accept it or but, um, she said it makes sense. So that's, that's a good sign.
The only difference I just looked through is the Home World funds. All the other funds match. I just looked through it right. Home World funds. This is zero. And you're trying to say?
Because.
That's just the corporate power.
No, because they, they're talking about tax rates.
Okay.
So there is no tax rate. Just like there's zeros for CCI, there's zeros for CDIT and Riverboat. Cause you're just talking about tax levies. So the budget, for some reason, it does not auto-populate and because the LGF doesn't care about those funds. When you see, it says they're not reviewed by them. So it, they, I guess they just don't have gateways that even populate those, put those values in there. So that's why I gave you the form one, so you can see what those are.
So this is a public hearing, so it means we've opened it up for any comments or questions.
So hopefully it's okay, cause if it comes to budget time, it's
Yeah.
Yeah, if the adoption, then it's, that's it. Okay.
So any, any last units for questions and comments? Alright, so we're in the close of public hearing. So new business, uh, ambulance. I proposed, um, that we contribute to this equipment purchase that proportionally to the town of Lowell is giving thirty-five thousand.
So I'm sorry, is this something you're adding to the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
We had, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I didn't see the agenda until later today. But we talked about, talking about this in the meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
But so if you guys might need to vote to see if you can change the agenda, the agenda's still published. So normally if you have an agenda, you don't have to have an agenda, but if you have one, if you're going to go off the agenda, you need to especially if it's something you're gonna vote on. You can't change it. You don't have to have one, but if you're going to have one, you have to go by what the agenda is.
Are you talking about the open dual law?
I'm just talking, I'm talking about the rules of having an agenda. It's totally fine if you want to change it, but that's why I asked if this, if it's okay to have additions on it. Because once it's advertised to the public, you have to go by what the agenda is. So it's fine if you wanna change it. It just has, it needs to be a request of, or a vote of the council.
I looked at the open dual law. Cause we've talked about this in the ambulance board, that we don't have to follow the agenda that we post on. You know, you're allowed to add things to it.
They're not a taxing agency though. This is a little bit different. I mean, if you don't have to follow my advice, that's fine.
Yeah, I was just trying to find it in the, um, there's a handbook, it's really handy. No pun intended. What? Yeah, well, after the fact, I really, it said, it said no pun intended intentionally, but I did not make the finding intentionally. Yeah, I'm pretty sure we're okay. But we can't find that.
Would this be something that I never voted on?
Hmm?
Would this be something that you have to vote on?
From how I understand, being taught about agendas, if you are going to use one, you can't change any business that's lined up. You can't add anything to it unless it's something that you guys vote on to, to change, like right now. David's like, I would like to vote on this. Then you guys would have to vote on adding it to the agenda.
Why don't we just vote on adding it to the agenda?
That's perfectly fine. Yeah, that's all you would have to do if you, if it's something that you wanna discuss tonight.
Do we even want to do that?
Mm-hmm.
I would like to make a motion to add the, uh, discussion to the agenda.
Perfect.
Okay. About any discussion on that motion? Alright, all in favor? Alright. Any votes? Alright, motion carries.
Are you undecided?
I forgot to say undecided.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know where to throw that out. I'll just, I'll just stay silent.
Okay.
Thank you.
So. Town of Lowell was chipping in thirty-five thousand dollars towards this equipment purchase. Proportionally with our net, uh, net assessed value of taxation, we're two percent precise of the town of Lowell. So that would be seven hundred and thirty dollars. Um, so I'd like to chip in that much towards it. Just kind of as a show of good faith, we've been getting free service from them, from what I understand legally. We have the responsibility to provide EMS service. And it's been some quirk of how it was set up that it's all paid for by the townships. And it's not paid by the towns at all. So Lowell doesn't contribute anything. We don't contribute anything, which isn't working for now. But it's starting to, you know, the cracks are showing in that. So for example, um, our, we've always paid for the new ambulances out of our operating budget. The operating budget we passed for twenty twenty-six doesn't include the money needed for the ambulance that's gonna be delivered in twenty twenty-seven. That's gonna have to come from other funds. So we don't have to. I was asked to ask us to contribute. Money's paid for us too.
I'm just curious, do we have, uh, are there any other municipalities besides us and Lowell?
Uh, Cedar Lake has a tiny bit in West Creek. And Cedar Creek, townships. But they don't, they're not on the board. Um, their net assessed value is actually greater than, or maybe close to, I think slightly more than our net assessed value.
Based on a small part of this?
Yeah. Right. But I don't know if Cedar Lake has a municipal, you know, if they have a municipal department that they're answering. I don't know where the calls are getting dispatched for that area. They might be getting dispatched to Cedar Lake's department.
Yeah, I don't know. Eagle Creek does not have any municipality, correct? Rather than I know of.
So where does their portion come from?
It sounds like it's directly from the townships.
Were you able to ask any trustees what our portion of our township come, our property taxes, what that goes to?
Um, maybe willing to meet with us. So I mentioned that to Alice Dahl, and I forgot to mention it. So we wanna meet with them. We tried to get this equipment purchase due for this year. So we could just say, let's sit down with me. Or we could go ahead and contribute now to this.
Wouldn't it just have to be done by?
Trustees were asking for invoices of the decent. They wanna pay it as soon as possible. We don't know if there'll be any balance, cause the, the question is how much Eagle Creek is gonna put up? They're gonna put up something between eighty and a hundred thousand. And I think the remaining balance after what Tri-Creek and West Creek and Cedar Creek and Lowell put up is about eighty-seven thousand. So depending on what, uh, Eagle Creek can do. So they might have it all covered without us. Who's the trustee for Eagle Creek? There wasn't, she was, she wouldn't commit, she committed to at least eighty thousand, but wouldn't, wouldn't commit to more than that.
Where would this have to come out of?
I would have to look, I would have to look. I mean, it would probably, it would make sense to come out of public safety. But it would probably have to come out of our donor fund.
What was that, what's, uh, that I have? I don't think we have it yet, but this new, uh, or Newt's going to bring this guy wire in. That's fifteen hundred dollar bonus to the town, so we could pay for it. That money might have to be appropriated.
So if you guys are rather.
I mean, it goes on a you want me to do an additional appropriation from when I get that money in? That takes months.
Well, that's just a thought.
Yeah. I mean, I get what you're saying, cause of the money that we're losing to go replace, basically.
Do you wanna sit down with the trustees? Or do you wanna go ahead? I mean, if we don't contribute to this payment, we could always contribute to the ambulance, you know? This isn't like the last opportunity.
I mean, to me, seven hundred and fifty bucks isn't really a lot when you're talking about the, the bigger picture of things. But knowing that part of my property taxes only goes to townships, what's that used for when we don't get any of that money back? At least I don't think. Like, does that money go towards bettering our roads around us? I know it maybe helps, like, poor relief if any of our residents are in trouble, but does that also go to public safety? Are we already contributing in that kind of way? I don't know.
We're contributing some. So when we looked at the portion of the property tax that goes to the townships, you'd be able to, after the work session, when we look at it, it's significantly less inside town limits than outside.
Right, cause outside town limits doesn't give us anything.
Right.
So it all goes there.
So we're contributing some, but we're contributing.
What was it, one point five percent, something like that, yeah.
So maybe we wait and find out what that amount actually is. And then if you don't have actually do it for this time, but we do it for the next, if it gives us time.
Okay, maybe we should, uh, deal with the trustees.
Okay. And then perhaps do this at the next meeting. Alright? Your guys' thoughts?
That sounds good. If it's other than, maybe they would know. What about just going where from our taxes?
Or what month they would even be, would be happy with. I know seven fifty sounds great.
Yeah. So Alice was the only one asking for this. Heidi was a little bit surprised. Alice, so you, you might get different answers from different trustees. Part of my thinking was also, um, so, yeah, okay, we'll schedule, get a meeting scheduled with the trustees. I don't think we need a motion to that.
If you wanna kind of, then I'd date some time for something.
Yeah.
I should be able to make myself available. I should just have to work on the bus schedule.
I should be able to make myself available, and if she just has to work on her bus schedule, I'll know.
Okay. All right, open forum. Anything? All right, um, the word check?